We'll call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. All right, welcome everybody. We will get started and first we'll hear board bravos and updates. What do you guys have?
We have the nesties on Thursday, which was awesome. Always a really good event, a lot of good winners and good stories and speeches and just a lot of good spirit within the whole thing. So awesome time.
That was my first one I attended and I was super impressed with how well it was put on and how well it was ran. And shout out to Keith Faust for emceeing, he did a great job.
Other things? Anybody want to add?
Prom to Don.
Yeah.
It was excellent, you know. Thank you to the volunteers.
Yes, so many volunteers.
Julie was instrumental in that, she was ordering food throughout the night, but they did a great job giving the kids something to do after prom for several hours. And, you know, they were still there, several there at 4:00 in the morning.
Until 4:00 in the morning, yeah. And thank you to people.
Some shady black jackets.
Yeah, there were some questionable volunteers in the casino room, but thank you. Tons of parents, Carol Dixon ran that group. And yeah, thank you, that was great. Thank you guys. I know we had a lot of great things to celebrate as we always do. I'll mention a couple, I'm sure that others might add on or Mr. Robinson will. But first off, Kim Klein, who's one of our middle school science teachers, 8th grade science teacher, found out that she is advancing in the Presidential Teacher Awards and the next step of that, which is a very big national honor. So that was, that was great. And that we had also just carrying on with the middle school. Our middle school students take part in a financial competition with one of our new teachers no less, jumping right in with these guys and gals. And some of those students placing in the top 10 for that. And I think a team as well maybe that did a great job, so kudos to all of them.
We have a couple, we're going to recognize several student awards here in just a few minutes. And so I won't steal too much of that thunder. But we also have the robotics team placed 3rd in the St. Louis Regionals amongst their highest performance in our history of our robotics team. And so we say thank you to Mr. Alk who's retiring this year. And what a great way to finish his stay here at Highlands High School. Several all-state competitors for, that will qualify for the state competition for art. We had a couple of first place winners and a second place winner as well. In terms of things that are coming up, we have a variety of variety shows and concerts coming up for the fourth quarter. So encourage people to look at the calendar and try to get to some of the arts programs. Our district art show is this Thursday and that is district-wide at Highlands High School. So I encourage people to come and do that. And I will, I'll finish before we meet again, we will have already started state testing and AP testing. And so encourage our people to finish really, really strong as we get into the throes of the fourth quarter. So lots of things to celebrate.
I did have one more, I forgot. So We Do People did their nationals last week. I don't think they placed, but they were in their national competition in DC last week. So I think they just got back Thursday or Friday.
Saturday morning.
Okay, there you go.
They came home and I think they were on the plane at 5:45 in the morning to get back for prom.
Awesome. As always, a lot of great things to celebrate, great variety as well. So, speaking of celebrating, I know one that Mr. Robinson was holding back on maybe is one we're going to be hearing about from now, which is our TSA state champions. Is Mr. Rozell going to talk to us?
Yes.
Come on up.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Can anybody hear me? I'm Ron Rozell, I'm the engineering teacher for our Highlands High School. And want to thank you guys for recognizing this group. This group has been around, this group is a local, obviously us, then it's a state group and also a well-known national group. At the state level, we've had records of student enrollment with, I believe we're up over 6,000 members now just at the state. And then nationally, it's 20,000 plus. So there's a lot of kids involved in this. And we want to recognize some great students here and I want to say recognition to all our kids that represented Highlands. They did a fabulous job in representing us. And as usual, they always perform well. Every year it just seems like that level of competition just steps up. And we had the privilege of bringing home several awards and we're going to recognize three tonight. And what I'd like to do is just recognize the first few and then let them come up and maybe speak, just tell a little bit about your competition, what you did, how you placed and what you really enjoy and learn about that. So our two first-place awards in the photo technology engineering is Elizabeth Clark, I'm going to call you up in just a second, that'll be the first one. And then our other first place is two young men, Gabe McDermott and Isaac Piper, who placed in the music production, which I want to give Bill Poff a lot of credit for that because he has really enrolled in his program, but he runs the TSA program through me as well. So what we'll do is we'll have Elizabeth come up and she will talk a little bit about it just briefly, explain to the board, the crowd, what you did, what you've learned and what you were really excited about. Elizabeth, come on up.
Yeah, so I was in photo technology engineering. I did it regionally and at state. So I made an initial portfolio for regionals that we then used again at state to qualify in the semifinals. So I believe there were 12 semifinalists. And then we got a new prompt which was to take four photos of the same object from a different angle and lighting, colors, things like that. And then make a portfolio that talked about just information on how you took it, what edits you made, things like that. And then submitted that. And then we had an interview. And then I placed first out of those 12.
So Elizabeth, did you, did you have time or was that kind of like?
24 hours.
Oh.
So they gave you two and then you kind of had been fighting where in the conference, such as on the object that was in the hotel or something like that. So I took a picture of the light fixtures, I haven't actually, but. So, yeah, so I just kind of walked around and looked at whatever looks somewhat interesting.
Right. What inspired you?
Right, yeah.
So you're allowed to take a camera?
Yeah, so I brought my sister's old camera aside and I've taken any like photos on a camera before regionals. Yeah, so I kind of looked through stuff for inspiration, I guess, on how to do it. And then I looked up YouTube videos on how to edit stuff and then figured it out from there.
That's awesome. Good for you. Can we see the pictures?
Yeah. Yeah.
So we'd love to talk to state champions. What was your favorite or what was the most interesting interview question that you were posed?
Well, there were two interviewers and one kind of asked us more traditional questions, I guess. So one sort of like what you would do differently if you had more time because it was limited in time. And I was doing other events as, for those 24 hours. So you kind of just had to find time to do it. But, and then there was another question that was, it was mostly sort of, they looked at your photos and they asked you specific questions based on that. So it was one question of like what would be an easier way to do something that I did after I explained how I did it? And basically they said there was a lot easier way to do it than I did. But I got there in the end, so, yeah.
24 hours.
Right.
How long have you been interested in this?
Photography, a couple of years. I bunch of pictures on my phone of like a CD and like trains. And I take portraits of my brother a lot. Kind of just hang out most of the time. He's on bro and he has them. So those are the two main things that I've always taken pictures of. But like I said, I've never actually taken pictures on an actual camera.
Yep.
So it was a bit of a learning curve. But I would say I'm definitely.
These are awesome. Yeah, these are great. 24 hours with that together?
Yeah.
Did you see your fellow competitors like trying to like steal ideas?
Were they following you?
No, I saw some that were taking pictures of each other. And there were some that were trying to take a picture of like a hotel plan. I didn't, I didn't like to see anybody else. But yeah, there, people were not only scrambling around, running around the whole hotel.
That's great. Yeah, good for you.
We have a shirt for you, so there's swag, don't leave.
That's yours.
And just to sum it up, just so everyone understands, Elizabeth's been with me for many years, junior this year. TSA has a lot of competitions, you know, it all involves engineering. But the great thing about this organization, which stands for Technology Student Association, it's broad for these students who have other interests. And not only did she compete in this, but she competed in several other events. So these students are busy all day. We'll start some at 6:00 in the morning and we'll go to about 11 o'clock at night. And they all have different schedules they have to follow. So she did a fabulous job and as you can see, the onsite prompts they give the students, they have to be ready for. But to get there, you have to qualify, prepare for the events in order to compete at the state level and then put it together and win.
Well, they go on, Mr. Rozell, will they go on, is there like a national?
That is correct. So June 27th through July 1st, though to Nashville, Tennessee, she will compete. I do believe she is going to represent Highlands and so that's an opportunity we'll have.
Okay, good luck, Elizabeth. And we'll see you at the, you know, August meeting or July meeting to report on how well you did.
No pressure.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, so our next two young men, we have Gabe McDermott and Isaac Piper, music production. Guys come up, talk a little bit about that and explain what you did and.
Hello.
Hello.
I'd like to walk you through a little bit of our process. TSA, this is both of our first years participating. I'm a junior, he's a freshman. Initially, what drew me into TSA was one of my other friends who participated in place, he didn't get first place. John Extercamp told me that I would potentially be interested in TSA because of the music production prompt. I thought that was a really interesting opportunity to showcase my skills, give me some initiative to work hard. And I also really appreciate how it forced me to kind of get to know Isaac a little bit more. I've known him until like 8th grade, but I'm glad to like start working with him. Anyways, we got our prompt, do you remember when? I think it was like October. It was probably last year. Yeah. But the prompt was music that would play in a video game out of Blacksmith. And it was a pretty, we had about two months to work. I don't think we started until the last month. Not a good thing, but we got done. A lot of the, a lot of the work just went into building an initial, and it's hard to like explain this, but went into creating like an initial melody, like the first thing to start with. And then what we could build off from there was really where the project started for us. And we submitted it, took it to regionals. And at regionals, we placed 2nd. And on our rubric, we had a 64 out of 100. It was not a great score on the rubric. And I was going to make changes, I know I was going to go with Isaac, we were going to fix some stuff, but it never, it never came. I listened to it when I was going to change it, like three days before submission for state. And I went, I really don't think this was like a 64. I think I'm just going to turn it out. So we turned it into state and we were completely shocked when we won. I have no idea how it happened. I'm guessing some other groups got disqualified.
That's how you sell it. They saw your routine.
No, they did. They saw what the regional judges couldn't. If you want to ask them any other questions. Do you produce all the music like digitally or do you play instruments, record it? I play guitar and Isaac plays drums. And Isaac's a lot better at drums than I am at guitar, he's very good. But we didn't record anything on analog. It was all digital, just maybe sequencing the whole way through. But you know, that gives you a lot of opportunities to play with sound that you might not get through analog technology. But that is something we're going to look into next year, like recording real instruments, like trying to get a more analog feel into our sound.
Were you able to use the audio studio at school?
Yeah, I did most of the work in the audio lab, actually. I had a nice setup with my headphones in an audio interface just to get like a higher bit rate going out of my computer. And I'd share files across onto both audio lab computers. So I was really able to use that space to its fullest, I feel like.
Is this the first time you've produced music in there?
I haven't really gotten into it until last year. Last year is when I really started. But I've been playing guitar since, I guess, I think it was 5th grade. I've been really interested in music for a while. And if you want to answer that question too.
Yeah, I've been playing drums since 3rd grade. We didn't, as he said, we didn't record anything analog. But I think what really helped us a lot, like at state compared to regionals, is we went into our interview. We like knew a lot about our project and we were asked some very good questions and were able to get good responses that I think helped us a lot.
And is there a national for this as well? Yep, okay. What are your, you going to do, what's your next steps in music production? I mean, guys, does it inspire you to do something different or something new or?
We're definitely going to do this again.
You know what, you know what we talked about at state after we won? Next year, we're going to make an eight-minute prod rock epic.
It'll be like, you know, like a concept.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we get to here or can we?
Yeah, I have my MacBook if you want to, I don't know how.
Maybe you sent, can we send, have it sent, will you take it out there?
Yeah, I can, I can email it.
Yeah, you can share.
Put it on our website.
Thank you.
I do really like how, you know, there's, there is a good variety of different projects and areas so that the students can get involved in and you can attract like students interested in the arts and then merge that with technology and things like that.
Yeah, just to sum that up a little bit, what these guys actually have done, what's great is we, you know, collaborate and Mr. Poff's kids and the music room that they act, the audio room has been phenomenal. These guys got to use, so it gave those students an opportunity to compete somewhere. And, you know, Isaac's always in my engineering class and Gabe's in Mr. Poff's class. So it was great to collaborate with that and they got the opportunity to compete. And just so that you know, a lot of these kids compete in teams, you know, a pair or a single, like Elizabeth was a single. But typically when they go to state, I pair them up or go be in teams. So they might be a single event, a group event, etc. They'll have to compare or compete in three or four events. It just gave these guys a great opportunity and they get their prompts early in the fall. And a lot of times you can't really prepare as you're going through. Because a lot of them are still learning the technology, whether it's CAD, whether it's photo, whatever that is. And by the time we get to regionals in January, then we hit the spring for our competitions, they're ready to go. Again, we congratulate them and want to thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we'll keep recognizing some awesome things. It looks like we have a busy family coming up. So we'll hear from one individual and that is the brother in this family about Regional Spelling Bee winner. And I think Ms. Walponon, are you going to be telling us? Okay.
Well, hi guys, how are you? I am here to just briefly introduce the young man who needs no introduction. And you will be seeing, this is the first of two, I believe, Weghorst awards or recognitions. So George over here, he competed in our HMS Spelling Bee and won. And then he moved on up and through the ranks to the Regional Spelling Bee. And he took first place there and earned himself an opportunity to compete in the, I believe it's the 100th Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington DC. And so he is headed to DC at the end of May.
That's televised, correct?
Yes, correct. So I think the coolest statistic that, that I heard from the Weghorsts was that 11 million kids participate in the Scripps National Spelling Bee competition in some way. And only 245 of them make it to this level that George has made it to. And so that's a pretty big deal and we're really proud of him. So I'll let him speak about his experience, but I hear it was really cool and we're just so excited for you.
George, we're going to just start throwing random words at you and ask you to spell them.
Just spell something really hard, we have no questions.
What was the winning word?
Yes. Fardel.
What is it?
Absorbed.
What's the, what does that mean?
It has two definitions. It can either be like a burden on someone or a bundle of something someone would carry.
And how's it spelled?
F-A-R-D-E-L.
And this was your, was this your regional word?
Yeah.
Okay, what was your word here at school?
Cabeza.
Cabeza?
I really need to brush up on myself. So have you always enjoyed, do you like the study of like words, word origins, like those kind of things? What got you into this?
Yeah, it was like a combination of learning words and also getting to compete with them. Yeah, I've been interested since like 4th grade, yeah.
Story career, I think, in the spelling bee. Yeah, one doesn't just turn out to be a game, right? It did a lot of work.
How will you prepare for the National Spelling Bee?
There's like a online website that gives you good intel on what they think the words will be in the National Bee. And you can study from a smaller list than just the dictionary. It'll suck.
What is the National Spelling Bee?
Last week of May, so the 25th to 31st.
Okay. And your brother was also a great speller, right? So it's in the family, so he'll be able to prepare you something.
That is so awesome. A great accomplishment and maybe even some more too. Once again, not to put pressure, but we could see you at a later meeting and on TV. We'll be cheering you on most certainly.
Thank you.
All right, so we have another Weghorst here to celebrate. So we're going to hear about Charlotte's accomplishments in forensics. I bet Ms. Davis is going to come tell us.
I have the microphone.
I didn't go that far.
Mr. Faust, they're going to give you your microphone.
Today it's allowed.
Well, since you are the, you know, state forensics coach award winner, you can tell us a little bit about this and congrats on that.
So good evening, my name is Alyssa Davis. All of you pretty much know me, I've been here before talking about our fabulous team and how we've grown from nothing to a big something. And I have quite a few members tonight, if they would stand and be recognized, I would love that. A big round of applause for the people who took your time. I think forensics is an encompassing word for speech, drama, and debate. There are 17 categories total which you can choose from and which you compete in. Charlotte's chosen category that she won state champion in was informative speaking. And I'll allow her to answer all those questions about what her chosen speech was. She wrote it, created the visuals for it. But that's basically it in a nutshell. And then we compete throughout the season on Saturdays. I understand your long Saturdays, we have the same one. And same type of setup and off we go. Our season is one of the longest, we start in September and don't end until March. So you're probably going to ask, is there a national? Yes, there is. But we do not get to travel to the national qualifying weekend. It's always the same weekend as the musical, which I thoroughly enjoyed this year. But since, since we kind of tag-team and share kids, that would be a difficult feat. So I would love to introduce Charlotte as our state champion.
Hello. That's me. I do informative speaking. My chosen topic was the United States funeral industry. It was a wonderful experience, you were able to write and research. It was also amazing to like make my boards. Informative speaking is where you create your own speech. It's a, as the name suggests, you inform your audience for about 10 minutes or so. And you write your speech, you memorize it, and then you have props. So usually kids like me, they use boards. So I created all these boards, Miss Vanderpool helped me print out a bunch of stuff in color. And you know, I had like a shoebox that I made to look like a coffin and all that. And it was wonderful, it was a great experience. I have those amazing teammates in the whole world. They're so dedicated, talented, hardworking and I couldn't have done this without them. And my amazing coaches as well, who constantly push me to be better. And once again, I really like this category. You know, all the students who participate in it are amazing at what they do, they're also talented. And yeah, forensics is an amazing program that I love so much. I only joined in my freshman year after everybody became jealous of Henry who was doing it at that point. But yeah, it was an amazing experience. And yeah, it was, it's great, I love it.
Okay, so the question, how does one pick that US funeral industry? It sounds like a great Stuff You Should Know episode, podcast episode. So I can see there, but how, did you pick that topic?
Okay, so have you ever, have you guys, I don't know if I've seen this, has anyone ever seen the Ask a Mortician YouTube channel? So it's run by this lady named Caitlin Doty who is a mortician. And she does all these like exposes on the United States funeral industry and all like the corruption in it. And you know, like, just like people like trying not to pass like green burials and stuff and like new waves of certain types of burial. And you know, like I talked about this in my speech, but like the traditional forms of burial, like going in a coffin and cremation often cause, you know, release pollutants and so people are turning towards natural decomposition and, you know, being buried naturally. And so there's a whole movement around that. And also, you know, the history of the United States funeral industry is so fascinating. And it's like inter-niches of how it worked and how it developed. And you know, the monopolies surrounding that. And there's like three major monopolies that own the United States funeral industry. And so, and they keep like the old names of the funeral homes and it's a whole thing. And so it was a wonderfully fascinating topic to do a deep delve in. And I think it made for, in my opinion, a good speech.
But did you see how it grew when she said?
And she lit up.
That was her passion.
If you speak so well, I think you could entertain me on anything.
So how long did you work on that? So how long did you work on this, like all season? Was this your focus? And?
Yeah, I do other categories as well. I did mainly pros in other category this year. But I think I went to Ms. Vanderpool about this at state last year, and this is my topic. And then I started going from there. It was like during like the very beginning of the year, you know, I finished all my boards and stuff and I wrote it. And then from there, it's just like perfecting it and all that. You know, getting through your speech and making sure you're not rushing or stuttering and making your boards pop and making your props make sense. And you know, getting all your good jokes out. Yeah, it's, once again, it's a wonderful, wonderful category. I really love it.
You're a very engaging speaker. Forensics help you do that?
I, yeah, I'd say so. You know, you're constantly getting feedback on how you speak and you know, your movements and how your voice fluctuates and all that. And so I think that's really helped me become, you know, a more confident speaker. I also do mock trial team as well. And so I think, you know, that's really, throughout my high school career, helped me develop my public speaking skills.
That's awesome.
I think I've done impromptu judging before, so.
Don't go too far, Ms. Davis.
So Ms. Davis just had the microphone to talk about someone else. So in about 30 seconds, I'm going to give it to her, and she can talk about herself. Grown the team from a small but mighty team to one that is on the rise in the state. Over the last couple of years, she's had multiple state semifinalists. And it happens yearly. She's had state runner-up, I think it was last year, two years ago, I remember.
I was state champion last year too.
Yeah, and then the one this year. So we, 2022 or 2023 School of Distinction, I don't remember the year, but we were recognized as a school of distinction at the state made for efficiency. So the students that went, they all performed exceptionally. So we're happy to say that over her time as forensics coach, with the team growing and performing well, that Ms. Davis was our Kentucky High School Forensics Coach of the Year this past year.
Thank you. I don't know what else I could say about my team, except that they're wonderful. And I couldn't do it without my parents as well. They were there with me every step of the way. So thank you very, very much.
One of the ways we like to recognize our state champions are with T-shirts and certificates. But when we have the opportunity to have a state sponsor or coach of the year, we like to present with our Tradition of Excellence Award. And so we present our Tradition of Excellence Award in your honor.
Thank you. Did you want me to sing before I leave?
I've also heard that.
Thank you.
All right, and we have one more award to round us out. So I think, yes, Cory's coming up to tell us about this individual and maybe some other people assisting her.
This is the first time I've come up and actually talked in this meeting.
Well, and welcome. This has been your first year in the district, and here you are.
Yeah, absolutely. And so my name is Cory Pazinski. I have nominated Ms. Becky Brady for this award as a parent and colleague. We have been fortunate to have Mrs. Brady as our daughter Amelia's first grade teacher this year. Amelia has thrived this year, and I know that is due to the continued support and motivation of Mrs. Brady. She ensures that all students know they are cared for by calling them the night before the first day of school, to writing them individual letters for each of their report cards, to celebrating each success they make in her class. Her students know how much she cares, and because of that, their love of learning has grown. As an example, my daughter had surgery in January and asked if she could come to school once she was done, so she wouldn't miss a day of Ms. Brady's class. As a fellow teacher, I have seen Ms. Brady's commitment to Moyer Elementary as well. The same love and support she shows her students is given to her coworkers. I look up to her as an example of what a distinguished educator should be. I am beyond grateful that both my daughter and I have learned so much this year from such a wonderful teacher.
She said I didn't have to talk.
And display proudly on your desk, right? Will you tell me if she doesn't?
All right, and continuing on to see some great things. I think we've got our student showcase is the Knights Society. And Ms. Neltner is going to be bringing in some people, I think, who will tell us more about that.
Welcome to the Knights Society, 3D printing club for girls. My name is Lila Sketch, and I go to Johnson Elementary.
My name is Aveline, and I go to Johnson Elementary.
My name is Charlotte, and I go to Highlands.
My name's Finley, and I go to Johnson.
My name's Lindsay, and I go to Johnson.
My name's Audrey, and I go to Highlands.
My name is Elsie, and I go to Johnson.
My name's Amy, and I go to Highlands.
My name's Sierra, and I go to Highlands.
My name's Audrey, and I go to Moyer.
What is the Knights Society? The Knights Society is a learning experience in 3D printing for 4th through 6th grade girls. We are a giant-funded program from Greater Cincinnati STEM Collaborative. We learn how to 3D print in the background of female inventors.
We learn about engineering. First, we come up with a plan or idea that you would want to do. Second, gather research and measurements you might need. Next, you need to create the design and prototype. And last but not least, figure out if you need to improve, prove it, and print the design and enjoy it.
We also learn about 3D printing. We first play our design with sketches in Play-Doh. We created our design in Tinkercad, then downloaded the STL file and used Kira to convert it to a G-code that the printer can read.
For the 5th and 6th grades' first project, we learned about Margaret Knight. She was the first female patent holder. She started inventing things, printing things at age 13. Our club is named after her. We designed logos for the club. This one shows the paper bag machine Margaret Knight invented. For the measurements, we had to get the correct ones and had to get them very precise in order for them to fit.
4th grade learned about famous female inventors and designed a symbol that would fit into a base that we measured. Some examples of people we researched were Ruth Wakefield, Grace Hopper, and Alyssa Chavez.
So we designed Grace Hopper with Lila and me. We made an American flag with a computer at the base.
Because Grace Hopper invented the first mechanical computer, and she served in the military. That's why we put a flag. Alyssa Chavez was another one of the research female inventors. She created the hot seat. So for the hot seat, the hot seat is something that will remind you to get your children out of the back of the car. Alyssa Chavez got this idea after hearing how many babies had gotten, had killed by being left in the back of a car. So we created a car to represent it because it's a part of a car.
My group researched Ruth Wakefield, and she invented, or we printed a cookie monster because she invented the chocolate chip cookie.
The second project choices would have been a car or an invention that could solve a problem or could help run a business. And then this is, this is my design. It's a robot bag and a cookie cutter. The bag is a baking kit, which holds the baking tools and also the cookie cutter. And then this is my robot in Tinkercad, and then that's me with the cookie cutter. And then a way we use the cookie cutter is we bake cookies with it.
For our project, we designed a car, which we called the Modern Conestoga wagon. Our wagon was based on a colonial Conestoga, which made its way into our design with the open front and back and the curved rear, which we applied the clean, modern twist.
It made room for a rubber band engine in the middle of the wagon. We miscalculated and the doors didn't fit. And the little spheres to keep the wheels on didn't fit as well.
Since years ago, we used a 3D pen to make sure the wheels stayed on.
Last year, I did a similar project that also had a car. The wheels didn't turn, they ended up scooting. So for this project, I ended up trying a new method for the wheels, and the wheels did end up turning.
I made a 3D-printed scooter. It has small holes for the Lego pegs that fit through them and the wheels. I had some difficulties at first. The holes didn't print correctly, so I had to try again. So then the size I used for the holes for the pegs was 0.75. It was pretty hard, but I finally got it.
For our second project, we did custom jewelry. Custom charms and BFF charms were a few examples that we made. For the one in the middle, we did BFF necklaces because me, Lindsay, and Finley all play soccer. So we did a soccer ball. And we put holes on the top so we can connect it to a string. Some challenges that we had were correcting the size, and the holes were too small to fit a string in. The one on the left is a custom charm, and it's based on a person's interest. For example, I love, I like this restaurant called Degre. So I made some, so it's based off of my interests.
I made a dice holder because my friend, or my brother and his friends play D and D. And when they play D and D, all their dice gets knocked around their desk while they're playing. So I thought of a weird situation to happen. So I made a dice holder, which can hold one big old dice or many small dice.
I did a mold for a candy shop. So you can melt the chocolates and put them in. And we did a heart shape. And I did L molds for my name, and it's backwards. So when it comes, when the chocolate comes out, it'll be engraved directly. Thank you for listening. Does anyone have any questions?
You guys talked about the hot seat, so could you move a little closer up here? Come up a little bit? Move up by the podium, if you don't mind.
So I heard the statement a lot of times of, you know, we, something was too small or it didn't work. You know, it sounds like there were a lot of times that something didn't come out the way you planned. Do you, what did you learn about like this whole experience? Because it sounds like you didn't give up when that happened. So could you talk about that piece? Because I think when we talk about engineering or technology, a lot of it is trial and error and learning from that. So what were your experiences in terms of that?
So it's really just trying something, and it didn't result, and like adapted to what else it is. Just sometimes it doesn't fit, and then you just cut them again. It just don't work out as they planned. So sometimes you have to take out a 3D pen instead of getting something printed. And that's a test.
Yeah, it's okay. That's how you learn how to write. Well, that's super cool.
Any, was this your first experience with a 3D printer for anyone in the group?
So is anybody maybe interested in pursuing, like as something? I know you've got a lot of time to figure that out. But is this technology and 3D printing or inventing, is that something you think you might want to do when you grow up? Maybe. It's fun for now. Yeah, it's like making some, I liked the dice holder. That was, and you guys all had good ideas in terms of seeing a problem and coming up with something to solve it.
What's on your list to make next? Anybody have a good idea? You got one?
Do you have one? She's got a problem for her brother.
Maybe a D and D race card holder?
Yeah, they make a big mess. I like where you're going with all this. Keep them from making a huge mess. All right, well, thank you, guys. And thank you, Ms. Neltner. I know you've done bikes with the Cincinnati STEM group before, this 3D printing program. What did you see in these young ladies as they've gone through this process?
I think, well, it's cool because we start with 4th grade. So like Charlotte, you've been in since, I think, 4th grade, maybe since 4th grade. So I just see their confidence grow. And then as they kind of age out of 3D printing club, they get into our mechanical engineering program with Bike Club. And we all just work together and figure it out, like measurement and all of it. So it's been really rewarding for me too.
And I'd love to see young women and the girls being involved in that area because, you know, there's not always enough representation. So that's super cool that you guys are doing that. Maybe we'll continue on and build a bike and do even more things. And Ms. Neltner's a great role model for all that, because she's a pretty cool woman who's doing it too. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I do not think we have any community forum comment. Okay, all right, so we will move into action items. But before we officially do that, I will say, if you're here to celebrate a student or teacher, don't feel you need to stay. Don't all run out at one time. I see you, Laura Clark. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Kevin's gonna caution you out there.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Alright, we're getting some ideas together for the retreat. We'll share with you, Mr. Pals, later. Now, not, no more along, more along the lines of a prompt, we could get, um, much like the 3D club or the TSA. And that's what he was going to do. Alright, so action items. It looks like Mr. Wisman is ready to go and tell us about the, um, athletic complex at Tower Park, a couple of things happening there.
So, uh, project update first, um, you know, there was, there was a lot of concern that the, um, extended period of rain we had, would create a lot of issues with the project and it created some, but, uh, we were in an enviable position in that, you know, most of the grading was done, things drained relatively naturally and the fact that we had already completed putting, uh, an impressive amount of line into the field area. Two days after it stopped raining, they were out there working on cutting in, uh, the drainage system in the field. And they have continued to work aggressively on the project. If you've gone by, you see the steel for the buildings. So you have definition, uh, you can tell what, what the steel is. They're working on, um, the utilities that have to be installed underneath where the grain stands are going. That concrete pad has been poured. Uh, they're working on the sidewalks that are gonna form the perimeter of the field, leaving out of course access ways for, for trucks to be then to construct the field. And they're working on the curb, uh, that's going to, uh, become, uh, what Moats will connect into. We worked, uh, last week with Moats on our final submittals and we sent them in and, and Joe was kind of doing final review on them also. Making, you know, final color choices, all the fine little details. And then we've worked with, uh, Vactronics who, assuming they complete another job elsewhere that was held up by the rain, they may be on site to start working on the installation of steel for our video board this week. A lot of good positives.
Yeah, even with the weather being challenging, so that's great to hear. And with all of that comes potentially change orders, so it sounds like you have one to tell us about.
We have change order number three. It's composed of, I believe, three individual changed, three or four individual change proposals that we had already reviewed. Some of these we reviewed two months ago in the working board meeting. Others may have just been last month. Uh, so it is for a total add to the contract of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven.
So, I, um, do I hear a motion for approval of change order three and the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park project?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright, it carries. Um, and then also with change orders, there are, and pay applications, so.
So we're up to pay application number nine to Morrell. Uh, and that's for just under one million dollars at nine hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
So do I hear a motion for approval of pay application number nine to Morrell Construction Company in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park project?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? It carries. And just keep on coming. Um, I think you're gonna be telling us about a district facilities plan as well.
Yes, so, um, several months ago, we asked, uh, the board to convene a local planning committee, a group of twenty individuals, uh, district staff as well as community members, uh, parents that represented, um, all aspects of, um, kind of our, our constituents. I told a couple of people that we saved the best for last because this has been a wonderful group of people to work with, highly engaged in a process that for the first time, we went into without a clear goal on having an elementary school or a middle school or a high school to construct a new major renovations. We, we, we could be free to brainstorm and come up with, um, a variety of ideas. They had worked for months. Uh, we've had a number of different meetings, um, and generated some great ideas. Some of which did make their way on to, uh, the district facility plan we're presenting to you tonight. Uh, the rest of which have gone on a separate list, so, because a lot of those are what I would refer to as maintenance items. Things that still need to be attended to, but aren't of a capital nature that they need to be on DFP. They're just things that, um, as a district, we need to take care of through our regular, you know, maintenance budget. So we, we have a good list there of things that they brought up as well. Once the committee had kind of formed, uh, our ideas, we put it into a draft district facility plan that we sent to the Kentucky Department of Education. And, um, I know sometimes I maybe speak negatively about some of our friends in Frankfurt, but in this case, two guys in particular, uh, Tom Thompson and, um, Gary Lee have, were extremely helpful in getting this plan to something that, um, really met our goals. So, we sent stuff and, and, and got, you know, a document back that had about twenty points on it, but it wasn't anything negative. It was, we think we need to do this. We think you need to do that. So the end result was, um, under priority one A, we're recommending, um, construction of a CTC center. Which, um, can be attached to the high school, separate from the high school. It's not officially part of the high school. It would be its own center that could address all of the current, um, career pathways that we already have at Highlands High School. We're not looking to add any pathways. We're just looking to create spaces that allow our teachers to, provide state-of-the-art education in these pathways. Because the spaces they're in now were ones that were part of the initial renovation of Highlands High School in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And things just aren't done the same way now. So, um, the only pathway that does not appear on that list is, um, broadcast journalism because we already have them in a state-of-the-art facility. We didn't want, we didn't think it would necessarily be wise to duplicate what we already have in the high school in a new center. So that was priority one A. And then, we also had a number of, uh, projects that were more renovation. You know, we're getting to the point where we need to be concerned about the roof at the high school. Also to do some potential renovations in the kitchen, cafeteria, serving areas. We listed Woodville under, uh, priority one C as well. That's our old elementary school, you know, there were portions of that that are getting to the age where we need to pay attention to that roof. Uh, we also, um, that's the one facility where according to KDE numbers, we are over capacity. So, they allowed us to put on, uh, to construct up to four standard classrooms. And then since the most likely place to put that would be in a current parking lot, they allowed us to put additional parking on there, um, if we feel the need to do that. And then our last priority one was, uh, addressing, uh, an upgrade at Highlands High School, uh, looking at a way to increase ADA, um, access by looking to find a way to put an elevator into the south building, which would probably mean building a, an elevator column so to speak somewhere in, in a whole shaft. Not just, you know, replacing the current elevator, but creating a space for a second elevator on the opposite side of the campus. We then, uh, what went down into priority two, um, which are still very important. It's just not something maybe would be the primary focus in the next two to three years. It's more of a four to six year frame. And we put on there, um, Highlands Middle School. We are undersized in, in terms of current standards in both cafeteria and the media center. So we were able to put a couple thousand square feet for each of an addition on there. And then we moved down to priority three and four. So three, uh, Highlands High School comes back and that's a renovation of, uh, the football field area, which could include, um, upgrades to the field turf, spectator seating, lighting, restroom, concession areas, uh, storage and, and, you know, have the opportunity to maybe address some stuff instructional spaces out there as well. And then management support areas. This is one of the areas where they helped us, uh, get creative. You know, central office, uh, we, we're at a point where, you know, the roof on that building, uh, when we took possession of it in nineteen ninety-nine, it's twenty-six years old. You know, we, we don't have major issues, but when you have a twenty-six year old roof, they're not far away. Uh, we do have issues with the HVAC system. We wanted to put on there that we feel that the HVAC system in that building needs to be upgraded or replaced. We have talked, uh, we talked a lot about creating an operations center. Currently, the facilities, technology and transportation, uh, people, the ten or eleven, twelve people that, um, you know, work in those departments, not counting our bus and van drivers and all that, they're spread out all around the district. Couple officers are central office, somewhere in, in the central IT area at the middle school. Um, some are, you know, working out of the birdhouse, you know, just, we're just spread out. And we wanted to find a way to bring those groups together that work a lot together, create a, um, kind of a, a way to bring those spaces together. And KDE felt that we could do that, particularly since on the last DFP, we said central office was ten thousand square feet, when it really is close to six. So, um, they felt that we could easily add an equal amount of space somewhere. Doesn't have to be, you know, i- i- it could be anywhere we envisioned it as part of another project or standard one. And then probably the most creative, um, was a way to address the plaza at the middle school. Which we can't really, you know, we don't really have the square footage to do an expansion there. But once we indicated that there was a parking garage underneath it, they looked at the plaza as the top ID roof of the parking garage and since it's, you know, older than fifteen years, they allowed us under priority four to put, um, dollars toward, um, dealing with that issue down there with the plaza that's not waterproof, that we do have leaking down in the garage and things like that. So, it was a very creative, um, suggestion by the folks at KDE. When you add everything in priorities one through four, you get our, uh, district unmet need of a little over thirty million dollars, which is an increase, um, over the last time by, I, I feel like we were right around nineteen or twenty, uh, four years ago. So, um, our need has gone up even though we had done a lot that was on that plan from four years ago. So that district unmet need will be the number that KDE will use in the funding formula. And then we have our discretionary projects on the priority five. Most of them Highlands High School, uh, we listed, or I should say we left, uh, not according on there. Um, expanding fitness and that should say weight room. And then gymnasium expansion. Those are three athletic complex, uh, items that they wanted us to have under priority five. And then Johnson Elementary School, uh, because it's listed under priority five there, uh, construct four standard classrooms because according to their calculations, we're not over capacity at Johnson like we are at Woodville. So they said you have to put it under five until such time as you are over capacity. Doesn't mean we can't do it. You can take anything you want out of any priority and under the current legislation, you can use restricted funds for it. So, that's, uh, once we got the feedback back from KDE and put it into that format, we presented it to the local planning committee last week and they approved it unanimously for us to bring to you, um, to present. Once you, uh, have the opportunity to ask questions and vote on recommending that, we have to appoint a hearing officer because KDE requires a public hearing, uh, where we go through and, um, document and, and give the public an opportunity, uh, to see and make comment on that. And then bring it back to you, uh, that public hearing we would like to have prior to the next board of education meeting. So we can then bring it to you for final approval and then send it to, um, back to KDE for its final blessing and, um, our plan for the next four years.
So obviously, a lot of work goes into the development of the district facilities plan. So thank you to the individuals, including, um, the board representative Sarah, uh, for serving on that. A lot of meetings to have people share, um, you know, their thoughts outside of just the group as needs they, they see in the district and then going through many, many, many steps to, to narrow that down. And as Jerry said to me, we're lucky that now as we've addressed our great needs and kind of get to think about some even bigger things and, um, get to talk about student experiences and how we can really grow those, which is something we, um, have all, you know, feel is an important thing.
Yeah, I mean, how fortunate we are in being in the situation we are. You've been through a lot of these, uh, buildings, uh, renovations, so. You know, kinda great to be in a, a spot that's, um, roofs and HVAC systems and making sure we're keeping up and maybe, you know, some expansions, but, uh, be exciting. Go through this, yeah.
For you.
This is my seventh. Quite a long time. It was.
Yeah, cause it was his last. Well, thank you for your leadership and all that, um, because it is also a daunting, can be a daunting task. But yeah, we've worked our way to a good place.
And, and Mr. Wisman, again, hats off to, to your leadership and, and description of, of not only the results, but, but the process. We, we're, we're very thankful for your, your experiences and background. Part of the motion will be, the other unanimous part that came from the committee was to, to, uh, request that you name Jerry Wisman as the, uh, public hearing officer as well when we, when we do this next time.
Alright.
One thing I would wanna add is that I do think, and I appreciate that you mentioned it, when we created this document, but a lot of what came out of the virtual discussions was just different perspectives and different tools that did create sort of a maintenance list. But oh yeah, these are things that we were able to talk about and take care of. And so I feel like we gathered a lot of threads at the meeting, not only just creating the document, but kind of illuminating some of those things. Um, so, it was a great group.
Alright, so, um, to continue on the, the process for the DFP, um, do I hear a motion for approval of the second draft of the district facilities plan to submit to KDE as final draft and appointment of public hearing officer?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? I think.
Done for now.
I think you are, so, yes. Yes, we'll see you in just a moment, but, um, we will hear about the employee wellness incentive from Mr. Robinson as a little palate cleanser.
Yes, we, we. Never been described that way, but.
Appreciate it.
Um, you know, talking about the Fourth of July is a great thing to think about on this rainy day here, uh, Monday in April. Um, but I'm asking you, um, to, to consider continuing, uh, an employee wellness incentive. But what, what this is, is participation in, in the annual Firecracker 5K. And so, uh, we, we offer each and every one of our employees the, the ability to be registered for free. They get a tee shirt as part of it as well, uh, and we, we have a really great representation from, uh, the Fort Thomas Independent Schools. So, that is the request.
Alright, and that's been happening for a, a number of years.
Ten to fifteen years.
We probably need to, yeah, figure out the exact number and, and start like celebrating the fifteenth annual.
Put it on the shirt.
Yep, yep. Well, we'll add our own to the Firecracker 5K. Oh yeah, we do have our own shirt. Amy wrote that down, so it will actually happen. So, do I hear a motion to, uh, for So do I hear a motion to, for approval of the employee wellness incentive for employee participation in the 2025 YMCA Firecracker 5K?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so just as was promised, we're going to hear from, first off, Technology, so Mr. Johnson, in terms of surplus.
As you all are well aware, we will be replacing all of our student, elementary student iPads this summer, as well as replacing all of our student MacBooks this summer with newer devices that have expanded memory. And some of the rationale behind that was primarily because the current devices they're in use are going out of warranty this summer, which if we allow them to continue going out of warranty, they can still be used, but the amount of cost we have put into warranty repair could easily run into a cost that's a significant percentage of what a new lease would cost. So that was one of the rationale points for why we wanted to go ahead and purchase new devices that would have new four-year warranties. And the other primary reason that we were looking at is, one of the pain points of the current devices is that the space, the memory on the devices themselves have provided some issues that we've seen at the help desk several times with not being able to keep the operating system up to date and some other features where the hard drive, just after it fills up, it just doesn't perform as well. So for those reasons, we decided to refresh the fleet, and what we would like to do is take the devices that are currently in student hands at the moment, and take some of those and keep those back for our new loaner fleet, because we do have an existing loaner fleet, some devices in that loaner fleet are over 10 years old, and they will no longer take any of the current operating systems, so they become a security risk, and they also will not take any software that we need for testing, state testing or AP testing, so we can't use them in those regards either. So those devices definitely need to be replaced. Once we pull back some of the current iPads and MacBooks for some of those operational type procedures, then what that leaves us with is 1,650 MacBooks, and those are MacBook Air M1s, 2020 model, model A2337, and we have 1,275 iPad A generation that we would like to surplus.
All right, so our first step, I think, is to approve the declared items that Mr. Johnson just shared. Do I hear a motion of approval to declare the attached list, as you saw, of items as surplus property? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, now that we have some devices to surplus, I have a suggestion for what we should do with them. The, as I mentioned a while ago, just the, some of the reasons why we felt the need to move to different devices, because of these devices, the MacBooks themselves have twice the amount of storage, the iPads themselves actually have four times the amount of storage as our current devices, which should ease up some of those pain points that we've seen. Plus, these will all come with four years of Apple Care, which includes two years, I'm sorry, two incidents of damage per year on all those devices. So a device could actually have eight instances of damage, we hope that doesn't happen, but over the course of the four-year lease, without it bearing any cost to the district. Even though those devices will no longer, the devices that are currently in student hands will no longer have any warranty available to them, although they do have smaller hard drives, they do have four years of age on them, that doesn't mean they're not valuable on the second-hand market. So what I would like to do is, I would like to take the 1650 MacBooks and the 1,275 iPads and put them out to bid as a lot, and putting them all out together should ensure that we would get more opportunities for bids for those companies when they have that opportunity to bid on a large number of devices, they usually come in with some better numbers. And plus, the RFP that we would put out there would also specify certain things that would prevent us from having to do, for example, all these will have to come out of our Apple School Manager, all these will need to have asset tags removed. The company that bids on these, they have the responsibility of showing up onsite, boxing them up and doing those things. Without that type of service, then it would easily run into hours and hours and hours of work for the technology department, which we would rather spend the time configuring new devices, again, those in the hands of our students. So that would be the rationale for putting those out to bid as a single lot, and I'm hoping you will approve that as well.
And you gave us a good rundown in the words in board meeting and explaining all of this, so thank you for that.
And there's money to be made.
There's, yeah.
And then we can turn around and put that towards new devices, so.
Absolutely.
All right. So do I hear a motion for approval of the request for bids and surplus property in Technology?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So he's back.
Yes.
To tell us about surplus in operations.
So we also have a list that we've been compiling for the last few months of a wide variety of objects that it's time that we declare surplus and try and sell. It's a variety of things, tables, chairs, desks, cafeteria furniture that has been replaced by cafeteria furniture that can seat more people, just some items that, you know, were in classrooms, but, you know, really just were taking up space. You know, when we had to create space during COVID, teachers learned to live without a lot of these things, and when we returned to the classroom, they didn't want them back, they liked that space. So they've been sitting in storage spaces, we have filing cabinets, we have sewing machines because we bought new sewing machines for Family and Consumer Science that were more modern and met the needs of what those classes need. You know, some old bench seating and kind of seating from Woodville, like I said, they replaced that, the boot seating, with tables so they could sit more kids. You know, we have some wooden chairs that were all the rage for a while and are no longer that way. A lot of these things, we've been sitting on for seven, eight years, and we just think it's time to clear out. We have a variety of cafeteria kitchen equipment that they no longer use, some mixers, moving machines, some kitchen equipment that was, say, the third serving line at the high school, we took that out of service, that went into an area that was kind of like a snack shop for a while, and when that was retrofitted back to teacher dining, it was either stored in the breezeway or see if someone wanted to buy it. When we do this, we usually get some bids on some stuff, we will generate some money. I don't think we're going to generate as much money as the iPads and the MacBooks, but we may get a little money from it. And then, once we've put it up for sale, then we're free to, you know, find ways to dispose of it, whether that be giving it away to someone that asks to work with a customer to buy it or whatever the case may be.
That'd be a serious mixer to put in your kitchen.
Yes. So we will publish this on the website, we will send it out to our staff and ask them to get it to friends and neighbors and things like that. We may even advertise in the local paper that this is available, we will send it to parochial schools and other public schools, and, you know, it'll be pretty widely distributed to see who may choose to put a sealed bid on.
All right, so much like the previous process, first, we need to approve the items that Mr. Wisman shared with us, so do I hear a motion of approval to declare the items we saw on screen as surplus property?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then I think you touched on all of this, so in terms of the requests for bids, any other information you would need to share before we do that motion?
Not unless you have questions.
No, my suggestion was just Facebook Marketplace, always good, you know, put it out there, that's where I find a lot of wonderful things. So I think we're good to go on that. The motion is approval of the request for items for surplus property in operations. So do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you. And then last up, I think for action items, will be Ms. Flaherty to talk about a request for a waiver for shortened school day.
Yes. So it's not happened often, but occasionally we have the result of an ARC that does request me then to come to you to ask for shortened school days for a student. Keeping the information confidential, the ARC did determine that it is in the best interest of the child to have a delayed start, and so I'm coming to you so that then we can discuss or answer any questions and seek approval of that for that one student. Any questions?
And as Ms. Flaherty mentioned, the Missions and Release Committee, the Art Committee, did discuss this, individuals, the situation and all the things, the factors that go into it, to make the decision.
Correct, and we have all proper documentation, if you consider, from KDE or the Department of Education standards of what the expectations would be, the information requests would be both in the IEP and in the conference summary for that student for the request.
So knowing all of that information, do I hear a motion for approval of the request for waiver for shortened school day?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, and finally, we have discussion items, if anybody has had board committee meetings since our last meeting.
We met the Salary Committee today and just had some preliminary conversations and heard from Mr. Robinson, Ms. Rellinger, and what I got to do?
Yeah, I think so. The idea was the discussion today, I think, to look forward to May, but the idea being that we need to continue to be able to recruit and retain the best teachers and to make sure that we are, you know, we call ourselves the best district in the area, and to continue to pay our teachers that way and our staff. So I think we had a good discussion today to see where we are, and we had a budget committee meeting as well, and to talk about how that's going to fit into the budget going forward, so I think, feel really good about that, and that is the topic for May at the board meeting.
It is, and it's, you know, as a result of decisions made by this board and really incredibly supportive community, our budget is in a very good position. We'll discuss and approve a tentative budget to submit to Department of Education in May, and part of that will be approval of salary schedules, and it's nice to be in a spot where one of the goals that we established was that we would be amongst the top in the region, if not the top in the region, and then also to, this board has given consistent feedback that we want to make sure that it's not at the expense of future raises, and that we can continue to provide some consistency there too. I think we're striking a good balance.
All right, any other committee updates?
I don't mind Wednesday.
Okay. Okay, all right, so we'll await that update. So I think then that is all our items for discussion as well, which leads us to our approval of the consent agenda. So do I hear a motion, or the recommended motion is, with all board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about the items contained therein, approval of the consent agenda, do I hear a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I believe we are finished at 7:55.